We can hear you, so that's great. It sort of fits the sound of life that she can hear us doing.
Good.
All right. Ready? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call it Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five Trinidad City Council meeting to order. And we will begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, give it back to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, and liberated and free. Everyone, there's no close call tonight, so nothing to report out from that. And begin then with the council approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any questions or changes from the council? All right, I am as well. Are there any public comments or questions? Sorry, Bryce, did you have any change that you wanted to make?
No, thank you.
Okay. And are there any questions from the public, comments on tonight's agenda? Seeing that, then I'll bring it back to the council for approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay, then there's a second. All of us in favor? I, do we need to do a roll call for, I think we would do a roll call for kind of substantive decisions or do? All right, so for things like the agenda and the minutes and things, we'll, we'll just do a normal. But if we do something more substantive, like a contract or agreement, I'll probably get a head on, head roll call. Okay, so speaking of minutes, the minutes from April eighth are under review by the council. Any questions or comments on those? No? I read through them, I look fine. In fact, I was gonna compliment staff. And when I look at minutes from other cities and from other meetings, I am always really impressed with ours, so good job. Uh, any comments or changes from the public on the minutes? Okay, seeing then, back to the council.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right.
I second that.
And Jeff is second to me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Bryce is, aye as well. But I should have mentioned this at the outset, that councillor Breckenridge is not attending tonight's meeting. And councillor Kenny, as you can see, is gonna be joining us via Zoom. And, and it is compliant with the Brown Act. We've reviewed the reasons for Bryson's being removed. So I should have mentioned that earlier, apologies. All right, council and committee assignment reports. You wanna start, Jeff?
Start. A lot of fun things happening at the Humboldt Transit Authority. We're exploring a microtransit service between the airport and Trinidad. To help maybe get more people to actually get to use public transportation. And it's basically like a dial-a-ride, like an Uber, you get to the air, you call, you get, you get a micro, you know, a small little bus to take you to the airport. And when you arrive, you call. So we're working out the details with that. Also, pretty exciting, they just received their first hydrogen bus and hydrogen fueling station in Eureka. And they'll be rolling that out in the next couple of weeks, so we'll be seeing that on the streets pretty soon. I have been asking them to drive a little slower in the city of Trinidad. And they're, they're telling their drivers to do so, so let's see. If you have any feedback, please let me know.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
There, do you want to go next?
Yeah, I attended a meeting of the Redwood Regional Economic Development Commission. We had a presentation from the California Fisherman's Resiliency Association. And learned a lot about the California fishermen's opinions and thoughts about offshore wind and its impact on fishing. And according to the presentation, that fishermen's aren't opposed to these renewable energy projects, but they are aware that they overlap with a lot of the best fishing areas offshore. So we just learned a lot about their organization and their, their concerns about resiliency and fishing in Humboldt County. And then our D, our EDC has been talking a lot about just different small microphones, more specific to Humboldt. Resiliency of the economy in Humboldt.
Thank you. Bryce, do you have anything you want to report out at this meeting?
Yes, I attended the HCOG meeting for April. And Trinidad's request for transportation funds was approved. And there was really nothing else noteworthy to report, so that'll be my report.
Great, thank you. Um, I just had a couple of really quick ones. I attended the Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting. Most of it was focused on how to read your bill and affordability of electricity. They wanted to point out that RCEA is not an extra charge. Everybody often thinks it is on their PGA bill. Um, they talked a lot about equity issues, that the lower income customers spend, I think, you know, obviously a higher percentage of their income for electricity. And so they're trying to mitigate that with different ways to reduce costs. But unfortunately, getting alternative energy is expensive at times. So they're trying to, they're offering free energy assessments. And I would encourage everybody to check out the, it's, uh, let's see, their website is redwoodenergy.org. And they have a free energy savings kit that's worth about a hundred dollars. So they have like micros and reduced slow showerheads and things that they give you for free. And then they also do these low cost, or I think no cost, energy assessments. So that's a great way to find out if you can, you know, save some money on your energy bill. So that was interesting. And then on Sunday, April twenty seventh, the Community Emergency Response Team conducted what was called a large first aid exercise. The moulage part is that it's real, like people have makeup on, so that you look like you're kind of bloody up and hurt. And so it looked very real. Some people got a little squeamish. But it was a great event. We had over twenty-five people attend. We had three different stations work, you know, set up. And I wanted to just shout out to Jeff Austin and Larry Goldberg, who are the Kobe, Kobe is absurd. And then May first, I met just for a couple of hours with the supervisor, Dave Score, from Sonoma County. And he was visiting North Coast just to kick off his campaign. So he's campaigning to replace Mike McGuire, a state senator. And I just wanted to also say that, you know, that was just a great discussion that I had with him. And Joe mentioned scenic drive and, you know, whatever we could do to fix up scenic drive would be great. But, you know, I was just really impressed with him, so I would encourage everybody to kind of check him out as a potential candidate. And anybody that comes here and spends hours with us is, you know, it's all right in my book, so. That's what I have. So let me, any personal questions or comments from the council about the reports? Okay, sorry, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing then, then I'm gonna go ahead and move us along to the public safety report. So tonight, we're gonna have that as a separate line item, and this is, no, we're not.
That's okay. Late cancellation from Lieutenant McCall.
Okay.
And he makes his apologies.
Okay, all right. Well, there is information in the packet. If anybody wants to, you know, we've, I've kind of skimmed through it, but we'll resume those reports next month then. Okay, then with that, we are gonna go to items from the floor. So at this time, members of the public may comment on things that are not on tonight's agenda. And we will address them as best we can in the moment.
Good evening, this is Jeff and Eric from eight forty-nine. It was, I just have two questions. I'd like to hear status on the question of science, I think. And also, I've heard from several different sources that there has been some kind of hazard, some kind of biohazard detected somewhere down in the waters. Whether it's Trinidad Beach or the Miller Creek, I don't know.
Oh.
Well, a journey or equali or some kind of pathogen. And I don't see that on here, so I thought we could have an issue with discussion, so I'd like to kind of find out more about what it is, where it is.
Okay. Um, and I, you know, when I said that we would address things, items from the floor don't always get addressed, but we will try when we can. But if it's anything detailed though, and it has to be put on the agenda. So I guess, do we wanna just make a quick comment about the crosswalk?
Sure, and so the crosswalks, we're still waiting for, the engineer is but he has backlog to work. He has agreed that he is going to take on the project. So we were just waiting for our turn in the queue for him to come up with a planner of those size.
Okay.
And as far as the pathogen discussions, that, that was an animal advisory committee discussion. Uh, we will be having additional discussion at the animal, animal, next scheduled animal, no, animal advisory committee meeting. Uh, and we haven't scheduled that yet. When we do have that, we will continue that discussion.
And then, and the hazarding question was, I think it was from a state report, and it had to do with excrement. You know, whether it's dog, animal, bird, and they check all the beaches on a regular basis. And it just showed up that some of the beaches, like the state beach, had, did show signs of having, you know, animal poop on the beach.
Was actually that state beach in the water shop where children are playing in the water and so, cause you're surfing, are surf fish. That's what it's found?
It's, yes, so.
According to the reports.
So what we should look at, what we'll look at, and I don't know if the Animal Advisory Committee is gonna go too much deeper into that, because that might be something maybe that comes to the council, depending on, on how serious it is. But, you know, they look at parts per million and so forth, and so we really need to look at it, you know, a little bit more and see how critical an issue it is, right? Like if it's just a little bit, it's, it may be just an acceptable level, right? But if it's not, then, then we need to mitigate.
You know, I was, I was out there yesterday, and there were dogs running around the place, some on leash, some off. And there were dogs taking dumps right there, and people were picking it up. And it's offensive to me, and I wonder if people that are frequently, frequent to the beach who are not from here realize that the dogs are supposed to be on leash and be, can't, they're, they're supposed to pick up the dog's poop. There's no sign down there on the beach. There's a sign right behind the board rock. And he's cleaning up after animals. There's a little station you can deposit stuff, but there needs to be a sign right when, when you go over the dunes, right in front of the parking cars. Big sign. And it also says, you're gonna get cited if you don't pick it up. And there needs to be like a warning, because people just don't seem to have any responsibility. Be some better.
Okay.
So I'd like to see a sign up there, and I'd like to see poop station where you can deposit right there, and some of those bags right there. So they walk right by it before they can even get on the beach, because I'm wearing the piece right now on the board rock.
So those are really good comments, and I'll take that back to the Animal Advisory Committee, because that is an area where, you know, they've discussed it. And in fact, I see Andrew's hand is raised. He's on the Animal Advisory Committee, so I think I'll.
We're really getting much deeper into this.
We are getting much deeper.
Sorry.
So, yeah, so Andrew, if your comments are about the, um, about the, um, you know, pollution on the beach, then, then Joe is right. He's, he's absolutely right. I'm getting too deep into this, and we need to save it for the Animal Advisory Committee.
Yeah, agreed. Oh, sorry, Andrew.
Okay.
All right. I, I, I agree. I think about not getting too deep. I just one question. Something has changed on the Animal Advisory Committee? I was curious if you could give us an update on that? Or when are we gonna get an update on that?
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Are you, a date for the next meeting, Andrew?
No, so Katie resigned, right?
So we will, we will have that at the next, at the next council meeting, we'll have that discussion, Andrew.
At the next city council meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Feel free to reach out to me, sir, if you have some ideas, because I would love to chat with you about that.
Okay, sounds good. I will, I will do that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna move us along. Other items from the floor not related to tonight's agenda. Okay, all right, seeing then, I'm gonna move on then to tonight's consent agenda, which is the financial statements for March twenty twenty five, the law enforcement report, the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five oh one regarding fire hazard severity zones, and resolution twenty twenty five oh three adopting a list of projects for fiscal year twenty five twenty six. Any questions or concerns from the council members about the consent agenda? Okay, any comments or questions from the public regarding consent? All right, is there a motion from the council?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
I'll second.
And there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, well, that moves us right along into tonight's agenda items, and the first will be, is a big one. So this is our, our annual discussion regarding the fiscal year budget. And for that, I will turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council, and those of you watching here and at home. I'm pleased tonight to do our, perform our budget workshop for fiscal year twenty five twenty six. I would like to say at the outset, this is basically a status quo budget, meaning not a lot of changes, other than the increase, small increase in wages. And we will get through that right away. Next slide, please. Or first slide. Magic. All right, so we're gonna do a little bit of a primer and primer and talk about the general how, how the budget units are set up, and just a general discussion about budgets and how it's structured. What's up is our budget, budget unit structure. So, uh, general fund includes administration, public works, police, and fire. Enterprise funds are integrated waste management. IWM are water funds and cemetery. So enterprise funds are rate payer. Uh, we'll, we'll talk about this in the next slide. But basically, they derive their funds from rate payers or from, uh, for, for fee. Special revenue funds are those that include gas tax and our Transportation Development Act funds. Uh, and grant funding includes the COPS fund, uh, long-range planning, uh, funding for both the general plan and the local coastal plan, and then infrastructure grants to help fund the inclusion in our infrastructure. Next slide, please. Go back one. Revenue sources. This is an overview of our sources. So our sources for the general fund, property tax, sales tax, and tourist occupancy tax are about seventy-eight percent of our budget pie. Rent and franchise fees and fees for services provided are the other twelve or fifteen percent, uh, twenty-two percent, sorry. Uh, enterprise funds, uh, integrated waste and water are both rate payer funded, and the cemetery is a plot sales funded enterprise. Special revenues funds, our COPS funds, this is how we fund our, uh, police and animal control. And, uh, patrol services, that's a federal funded program. Gas tax, state funded, and Transportation Development Act, state funded. Our grant funds are mostly state funded, or the majority are state funded. Looking back to Angela for, yes, that's correct. Angela's shaking her head. Uh, and that includes our long-range planning, which we use to help produce our general plan updates and our local coastal plan updates, which we are currently in the process of. Kind of constantly in the process of. Uh, next slide. General fund revenue sources, property tax and sales tax, uh, are a big part of our, our general fund. Property tax, about fifteen percent. Uh, sales taxes, somewhere around to forty-four percent roughly. And that includes nine, it's a nine point five percent tax rate for Trinidad. So seven, seven point two five percent for the state, Humboldt County, measure Z, measure Z, which is services measures a point five percent tax rate. Measure O was for the roads that was recently approved. It's a one percent tax addition. And then Trinidad District has our own add-on of a point seven five percent. Uh, in November of twenty twenty four, the voters did approve a renewal of our tax rate. That will can set the clock again for another four years, beginning April one of twenty twenty five. We've been collecting those taxes again at the meeting rate. Uh, just to give you all an example or an idea of what tax rates are here in the county. We're somewhere in the middle of the pack. Eureka and Arcata are ten point two five percent. Blue Lake is a little higher at nine point seven, and then Ferndale, Rio Del, we're in, right, right in the middle with them. Fortuna, uh, thinking of the bottom at about eight point seven five percent. So pretty much in the middle of the pack. For those of you that have questions about our tax rate and our structure and where we're at in the pecking order. Uh, revenue sources, again, we talked about these earlier. So, uh, our sales taxes are about forty-four percent, occupancy tax about nineteen, property taxes roughly fifteen percent. And then the rest of that pie, uh, is taken up with fours and fives, uh, vehicle license fee and interest from some of our, uh, holding, uh, uh, funds that we have that, that we're holding, uh, and then rent and franchise fees and license and permits. So a very small portion of the pie is funded by those other sources, mainly occupancy tax and sales tax for us. That gets us into the general fund discussion. The FY, no, one slide back. Go ahead. Okay, I can talk about this. Uh, revenues versus expenditures. So our general fund revenue is around nine hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's about a point seven, eight percent increase. We did increase a little bit this year based on, uh, past year's, uh, revenues. And this, we did a conservative adjustment. Definitely could have increased it a little more, but we wanted to make sure that we're meeting the targets without being too aggressive. I, I tend to err on the conservative side. Uh, revenue projection is at nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three. So that includes, uh, things like, if you're asking what the difference in those costs are, that includes things like the cemetery, uh, our Humboldt sanitation franchise fee, TD, our transportation development act funds, and those type of funds. Operating expenses are nine hundred, projected to be at nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, uh, nine hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and ten. That's a one percent reduction from the previous year. Again, we're trying to have a status quo budget, and, and we're trying to be mindful of, uh, of the uncertain economy and, and what's happening going forward in the next fiscal year. The difference in that, uh, number is seven thousand, uh, thirteen dollars, so not a lot of difference. General fund reserves, uh, next slide. This slide is, is a, is a great slide to talk about the reserves that the council, both by policy and, and by, uh, by um, past practice. So the emergency reserve, the budget stabilization, and the capital special projects fund reserves are all by council policy. Uh, seventy-five percent for the first two, and fifty percent for capital special, special projects. Those are seventy-five percent of current year expenditures. And as June, as of June thirty in twenty twenty-three, that was, uh, six hundred and ninety-two thousand and change for each of those. And four hundred and sixty-one thousand, which is fifty percent of the current year expenditures as of twenty twenty-three, the audit, uh, was four hundred and sixty-one thousand. We are in a current audit right now for twenty twenty-four, so when we come back in June, we should have updated numbers and be able to give you a little better idea of what that, uh, those current numbers are. Self-insurance, fire department, public works, town hall are all fixed numbers. Those numbers, council could decide to increase those funds, but they have not increased over the recent past. So fifteen thousand, fifty thousand, seven hundred, ten thousand, and forty-one, eighty-one respectively for those four funds. Undassigned fund balances equal about three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. A total fund balance of two point two million. I think it's important for us to know that most of this money is in an investment fund. It's a conservative investment fund. It allows us to transfer money back and forth between our checking account and this investment fund. So when we're doing larger projects and transfer money into checking, and we use that for cash flow, and then we get reimbursed from the grant funding agency, uh, as the work is completed. We generally try to keep around a hundred thousand dollar, uh, fund balance in checking. However, like I said, if we're doing projects and that balance could considerably higher, in general, we try to keep it around a hundred thousand dollars and, and, and keep the remainder in a higher interest earning account. Next slide, please. Uh, here we go, general fund divisions. Uh, admin. It covers a majority portion of the city manager, the city clerk, and the administrative support salaries. Uh, costs include the ones that keep our lives on. So public building utilities, office supplies, unique code revisions, website hosting, city attorney fees. Those kinds of costs are what we're coming out of the administration budget. The budget has increased the twenty-one thousand, proposed increase of twenty-one thousand, forty-one dollars. That's a three point six percent increase. And the next slide, I'm gonna tell you that wages, uh, medical insurance and general insurance have risen about twelve thousand dollars or about five percent. Uh, of those three items, medical insurance is up about seven thousand. Wages in general insurance are up about three thousand each, so medical insurance is, uh, double of the other two, uh, items on this list. And, and really, it's the biggest part of the increase in our general fund administration budget is, is these three items. We do have a line item, contracted services. Our grant writer, Angela Tather is here, and she's very capable. But if we, uh, get, are lucky enough to get, uh, more grants, then we could use the grant writer that is here now that is retiring, Becky Price Hall. So we will have her, uh, under, uh, a consultant contract, and only if we need her, will we use her, and those grant funds would be applied to that way. So we have that line item in there just to let you all know that we have a provision to have if we need it. Police and, and, uh, the cops grant. So police is three oh one, and the cops grant is three oh three. These two, uh, budget units go hand in hand or spreadsheets, uh, for lack of a better term, uh, be, be able to explain it. So fund, this funds a portion of the city manager's salary, uh, as I oversee the public safety operations and, and, in contact with both the lieutenant McCall and, uh, uh, Pacific Security on a regular basis. It also includes our animal services control, control contract, and our shelter contract, and the county sheriff. County sheriffs, uh, actually went down, um, about seven thousand dollars this year to sixty thousand and change. Animal control services up just a little bit, um, somewhere in the thousand, fifteen hundred dollar range. This budget is increased, proposed budget, we, we would like to increase it by forty-eight hundred dollars to a hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven forty-four. That'll be a three percent, point seven percent increase, and the reason is Pat Pacific Security performs additional, uh, patrol services for us, has asked us to increase, uh, their schedule to twenty-four hours a week, which would be three eight-hour shifts. They're currently at twenty hours a week, so they can come four days a week, five hours a day. Uh, the challenge is that, that, that they had another contract that had the additional three hours so that officer could get an eight-hour day, and that contract is not gonna be available to them this year. So the question for council is, would you like to have them for twenty-four hours a week, three days a week? That would be eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars more per year, or sixteen hours per week, and then that would be slightly less. Their hourly rate isn't changing, and I think it's important to note that this budget, however you decide to do it, will be cut by the cost. So it's up to you all to decide what you wanna do with that. Uh, our recommendation is that we have civic security for the three-hour, three-day, twenty-four hours, uh, a week. As this seems like they're pretty well received, and, and they do a pretty good job for us, in my opinion.
So be three eight-hour days.
Three eight-hour days. Uh, general fund divisions, fires, four oh one. It just covers the honorary for the volunteer chief and assistant chief, uh, also funds some equipment and, uh, parts and pieces that they could use. It's, it's a status quo budget. We, we kept them at the same rate and, uh, and, and didn't increase anything at all on this budget. Public Works, uh, five oh one, this covers the majority of the public works staff salaries on street lighting, trail, and public building maintenance. It's a flat budget. Staff costs did increase. Uh, we have a three percent increase for all staff across all the budget units. I did a CPI, uh, survey in February, it was two point eight percent, so we thought three percent, I thought three percent was a reasonable increase. Uh, lab fees have increased, but there's also a grant fund reduction, so it's net, uh, flat budget. Uh, we are proposing a half-time public work staff to be moved to a full-time, uh, person. That time would be split equally between water and public works. That staff members currently at thirty-one hours-ish a week or less, sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less, but on average, he's about sixty hours a pay period. Next slide.
And the CPI is the consumer price index, you're integrating the COLA to the CPI.
Correct.
That's why I think most of you.
That's kind of traditional, yeah. That's our traditional method. And February is kind of a more likely model from the same season, so according to the budget, March or April. Okay, here's the org chart for twenty-five, twenty-six. So this is where the rubber hits the road. Uh the admin group, uh total admin, four point seven five full-time equivalents for uh just to compare this to previous uh approved fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five was five point five. So slight reduction of personnel and you're going to see this throughout this organizational chart. We, my plan is to have a more efficient and effective operation and to have less part-time bodies, more full-time bodies, but less overall uh full-time equivalent personnel. You'll see how that plays out with this organizational chart. So public works. I mean, three uh maintenance workers, one one supervisor and two maintenance workers. The two maintenance workers are half-time and the maintenance worker supervisor is a point eight oh full-time equivalent. So in terms of total body count, it's one point eight oh full-time equivalent. And last year, you approved a two point oh uh full-time equivalent for this department. Next slide, please.
One thing I wanted to mention before we move on is that um the assistant for the city manager and then.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, city clerk and then assistant city manager, there it you might need to think about uh different title for that, for the or do you follow me?
Yeah, I do. So let I I am sorry, I I skipped over that. So uh we have been in discussions for a very long time about our city clerk. Uh who performs more of an assistant city manager role. Uh this budget reflects that work and the value that he has for this organization. So that my proposal is to have him as an assistant city manager slash city clerk.
Okay, and that makes total sense.
The grand administrator is a current position. The assistant to the city manager right now is listed in the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget as a project manager slash.
Program, maybe program manager?
Program manager. Management analyst. It was a management analyst slash project manager. And in my I the 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 way I would prefer to have this set up is to have a succession plan for this organization. My part of this succession plan would be for the assistant city manager to be able to take over the city manager's role when I leave and then have someone who could then succeed into the assistant city manager's role. That would be the assistant to the city manager. So that person would be um doing the work it out of the city manager's office, helping with finance, helping with H R, still doing grant work, uh a majority of grant work. They would be helping with S T R, they would be helping with uh septic system work. Um helping to kind of fill in the gaps and meetings that the city manager can attend. So um that that kind of role is a perfect setup to help. I think in a succession plan is important for any organization or an organization as small as this, it's critical. I think we should have homegrown talent that we can rely on, that understand the organizational values of this city and the place where they work. And I think um my proposal for this year is to help set that up. So that's what this organizational chart represents. Thank you, Mayor, for helping me through that.
Yeah, no, that makes total sense. And I I just might, um I think I should do the classification during compensation study to this. They'll sort of sort out the roles and responsibilities and job descriptions, which is one of the reasons we kicked that off because we were way behind in doing that. So thank you for looking on that. Um but I I just make it more, excuse me, that's an assistant to the city manager, right? Be confusing between those engaging people as city clerk and assistant. And then you have an assistant to the city manager. So whatever.
Yeah, it's it's a typical title in
Okay.
City organizations.
Yeah.
Um it's a little more confusing here as an admin and as a slash project manager. And and I want to set the person who has that job up to either succeed to assistant city manager here or to another organization.
I see.
So that's what I'm trying to do is help grow skill sets here that are going to be of value to this organization and to the folks that work with us. So it gives people a reason to stay here and it gives folks a reason to want to stay here.
Great.
Yeah, I can I can I just jump in for a second?
Sure. Yes, definitely.
So is is Angela then going to be the uh assistant to the city manager?
We would love if Angela would be the assistant to the city manager. We will open it up internally and and we will select candidates from inside the organization. Uh Angela would be a great candidate if that's what she would like to do.
And is that is that position, is there funding for that position in the budget we're, the budget we're working on?
Yeah, it it it's currently funded and the budget that we are working on was funded uh going forward.
Okay, thank you.
So not creating any new positions with this work, just to be clear. Just
Got it.
Re-classifying and re-classifying the organization's needs and the community's needs.
Thank you.
Luke Price or, okay.
Next, next slide.
And we'll do uh public questions once we're done with the presentation and the council question to open it up.
So water planning operations. Uh we have a chief plan operator. Uh that's a requirement by the state that will be a consultant for the foreseeable future, four thousand a month in fixed costs. T-three CPO operator in training, chief plan operator. Carl Anderson is scheduled to take that test in June. If we're confident that he's going to pass the test and he wants to be at halftime, which works very well for our budget. So we're hopeful that that's going to happen. Uh and then we then we will transition slowly out of the chief plan operator consultant work and into a CPO uh that's homegrown. Uh could take some time and we will have that consultant uh in some form or fashion for the foreseeable future, probably not at this amount, but at some capacity to help us with regulatory reporting and the stuff that our operators and CPOs just aren't um quite ready for yet. T-two operator, that's Kyle Shipman. So that's uh point two and he was just newly uh credentialed. He's his, the rest of his time is taken up in public works. Uh we talked about Derek Shadle and Saya Brown, both operators in training. Uh both looking to take their T-two tests in the very near future. So that would give us one point seven oh full-time equivalents. Again, as an example, compared against last year, you had three point oh approved full-time equivalents for the water treatment plant. So a big difference in in uh how I'm approaching this operation. Uh proposed staff for FY twenty-five, twenty-six is eight point one eight full-time equivalents. That's eight staff members. Last year, council approved nine point two five full-time equivalents, that's thirteen staff members. So again, significant reduction in staff, a pretty significant reduction in full-time equivalent uh bodies. But I think it's a more efficient and effective way to to work on the task that we have here in the city uh in a more uh effective manner.
Joe, Joe, I I didn't catch. How many employees do we have then? Did you say eleven?
Uh thirteen is what you approved last year, bodies. You had nine point two five full-time equivalents. And this year, I'm have my proposal is eight point one eight full-time equivalents with eight staff members.
Eight staff members.
Uh payroll projections, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand and three hundred and thirty-five. That's a one point one percent increase. Last year's uh budget, approved budget number was seven hundred and fifty-one and change. Approximately sixty-nine thousand of that is covered by grant funding. Then that leaves six hundred and eighty-nine and change to be paid for with the general fund, enterprise fund and special revenue funds.
Just, you know, want to say uh thank you, Joe, for the work you've done here because, you know, we had significant um cost overruns in our water plant and specifically around some of the consulting that we had. And the run rate was anywhere from twelve, thirteen thousand as high as thirty thousand for those who didn't know. Getting it, yes, exactly. So getting it down to four thousand a month is a is a big win. So I want to recognize you for that. So, thank you.
I'm I'm glad it worked out for us, for sure. It definitely took some pressure off the water fund and that was a great segue, um, Mayor, for the next discussion. Uh water operating fund. So revenues, uh four four hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and three. That's a twenty-eight percent increase. And that's mainly entirely due to the uh recently adopted uh rates. Uh I think they adopted in September. October, October and they went in effect in November. So uh we're just really finding out what those rates are doing. Uh and we're still trying to analyze the effect that those rates are having on budget. Uh but early signs are good, uh positive. Expenses of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine, that's down four percent. So again, that's uh, you know, getting that consultant off of uh off of the budget is certainly helping. Uh and there's a few other things that help. But that's the main, the main thing was the consultant was really driving uh the budget uh in the hole. We were restructuring staffing, uh proposed two point seven five full-time equivalents. So that number difference that we talked about earlier, this that's the admin help that we needed to to execute uh to execute the water operating fund, the billing and all the other stuff that we do on a regular basis to produce uh water and build the water fund out. Um but it is a slight reduction in staff, a point two five reduction over what you approved last year. We will have a small contribution, anticipate a small contribution to the reserve fund of a hundred and forty thousand. Uh next slide, again, and that is mostly explained in this slide. So if you look at all that red, that's uh what we were at before council adopted last year's budget uh and the consultant uh operating the water treatment plant. Um as of twenty twenty-five, uh the consultant was gone in March of this year. Council uh gifted uh three hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the water enterprise fund. And that hundred and forty thousand dollar uh positive number is directly because of that general fund gift. So uh without that general fund gift, it would probably be in a negative, at least a hundred and sixty thousand, we think, uh maybe a little bit less. So we do a little bit of explaining in that the bullet points at the bottom. Um I think the biggest takeaway from this slide is that we expect to have a little bit of a capital reserve fund of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And why that's important is because council also approved as a part of that rate fund two additional uh loans to the water enterprise fund totaling a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are trying to not borrow that money because it would have to be paid back at some point. And we think that with grants and and other um help from the adopted rates that we can avoid that hundred and fifty thousand dollar additional loan. Um we'll see how that works out. We're still trying to analyze it, but we're hopeful at this point. Um we were able to get, the next slide, it helps us explain that a little bit better. Uh and at the bottom point of measure Z funds, we uh applied for measure Z funds. It's um, we talked about that earlier. It's uh a voter-approved tax measure here in Humboldt County that was for safety funding. And we uh our story was that water is a safety issue, both for firefighting capacity and for our own life, health. And uh the committee didn't agree, but the board of supervisors did agree. And they uh we asked for someone around sixty thousand and and they awarded us four. And so we were very happy with that award. We were very lucky to get it. There were a lot of folks who asked for money that didn't get any funds. So it definitely will help out with our capital fund reserves. Uh I think it's important to note that without the rate adoption, we would not have got these funds. That rate adoption is what helped the supervisors be able vote for us to get awarded funds. So thanks to the council for that. Uh back up to the top of our footfalls and highlights. Uh and we're going to have that enter T three operator as required by state laws, I mentioned earlier for the foreseeable future, but we are growing home hometown. Uh we expect to have that T three. We ex, he he's very confident that he's going to pass the test and I share his confidence. Um continued operator training and retaining in-house licensed water operators is important to us. Um and and this budget reflects that. So that's what we're trying to do is is show the value that council has placed on the staff that uh works here. And um we're going to analyze and adjust uh to our operations for the adopted rigs. And we're going to use that measure Z funding to buy uh equipment and uh parts for the water treatment plant and help uh avoid an additional loan from the uh from the general fund. Uh next slide, here. This is our grant slide. It's kind of hard to read. The bottom number is the one that we want to see, the very bottom of the trident. It says sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. It's down considerably from uh two years ago when it was somewhere in the hundred and twenty-nine range. Last year it was around a hundred and ten, a hundred and eight thousand. Uh so grant funding uh is kind of uh the forecast isn't very hopeful, but our grant staff is very good at at uh getting awarded grants as evidenced by our measure Z uh funding. So we hope that we're able to get additional grants. Um and the next year, we're looking at the Axel Lingren Memorial Trail Project to continue working on that. Uh the LCP update is for our local coastal program and general fund. So we will continue working to update that. We were the first, I've learned since my time here as as a city manager, that we were the first city to get the local coastal plan approved. So it's there's many parts of that that I've been informed that are no longer workable. So we need to get that updated as quickly as possible. And planning commission is working on that uh along with the general plan. So we hope to have some new uh at future council meetings on that update. Next slide, please. Uh goals and highlights. We're going to continue to develop staff, implement, implement our classification and compensation study. That should be back to us. We're hoping June or early July, uh we're going to continue the website updates and improvements to enhance our public engagement and access to documents, resources and services. We're going to continue to support the library, the museum, the cham- chamber and the land trust uh as council policy uh has guided us to do that, maintain critical and general services, public safety and admin. And we're going to continue to wo- work on uh getting the general plan and local coastal plan updated. Public Works has some stuff too. So we'd like to fund that additional full-time employees, but in water. We're going to reintegrate the public works, water and public works teams, uh make them more of a cohesive unit. Uh it's important that when you have a smaller, a lower body count that you're effective with the people that you have, the people that show up on a given day and you'd be able to do that work. And that's what we intend to do. So it's important to have those people working uh all on the same page. Uh we're going to do new windows, front porch and four. Uh we're working on that now. So spring uh summer of twenty twenty-five, exterior paint for town hall is scheduled. Uh we're getting prices on that now. It's coming back at around seventy thousand with a little bit of contingency for us. So that would be fall twenty-five or spring twenty-six after the windows are replaced. We're going to continue to look for grant opportunities. So the sports court is certainly one of those. That's a tennis court, pickleball court. The boardwalk and and L M T are all grants that we are actively working on now.
From a budget perspective, I don't want to get into the whole pickleball court, you know, debate until it's agendized. But from a budgeting perspective, since we were going to use grant money to resurface the tennis court, if we were able to, you know, uh enhance it by adding the pickleball court, if the council were about no on that, then we would have to find the funding out of our budget. So
That's correct.
I'm wondering, yeah, I guess we should think about maybe accounting for that somewhere that if we wanted to resurface the tennis court, we would need to add an addition. And I was looking at the trail money, the ten thousand that was assigned to the trail committee, because if the trail committee isn't using those funds, maybe we could use that for the tennis court. So I just want to throw that.
We have, we have other funds too.
Have other funds that we can tap.
We have some CERA funds and some other funds.
Okay, so we'll we'll worry about that when we get to that. But I just want to make sure we had it parked somewhere.
Yeah. Uh next slide. Uh, next slide. Uh, next step. So we're going to review financial statements, uh, and, and see how we performed after our audit is complete. We're going to receive your input this evening and then update our proposal for the budget for discretionary spending. We're going to prepare our final draft with all revenues and expenditures. And, and we're going to come back here on, uh, June tenth with a resolution for budget adoption at the council meeting. Happy to answer questions or comments.
Okay, let's start with the council. Any other questions or comments? I've been kind of asking mine as we go along.
Well, uh, I'll, I'll jump in, Mayor, if I can.
Please go ahead, Bryce.
Um, first of all, just briefly on the last subject. Um, as far as I know, the council has not approved the, uh, proposed um, additions or changes to the Axel Lingren Memorial Trail. So I, I think it's a little, um, maybe getting the cart before the horse to be accounting that grant money as, you know, a, a done deal.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree, Vice Mayor. Uh, I just wanted the council to be aware that that grant is out there. Um, and that the tri management team has been discussing that grant and, and I believe the Tri National Society, uh, was working on that grant with the Coastal Conservancy. And so that's how it ended up in our group. And, and we just wanted to make the council aware that as a discussion, uh, that's going on and, uh, for and or, and once it gets any further, we will come back to you with an update and direct and ask for correction.
Good, because I've, I've stated a few times that just because there's grant money available for something doesn't mean we should do that project just because the grant money is available. We have to make sure it's something that, you know, fits with our policy goals and, and so forth. Otherwise you get the, you know, the cart leading the horse. And I think we want to avoid that. But I really appreciate the presentation. Um, it made, it answered actually a lot of the questions I had. As I went through the, you know, the line items and, and so forth. So I, I really, uh, it was very useful. Um, let's see, that's curiosity. What are we getting on our, um, emergency reserve fund? What, what kind of return rate are we getting on that?
Between five and seven percent.
Somewhere between five and seven percent according to our expert who's managing, manages that fund.
Wow, that's a lot higher than I thought it would be.
Yeah, we, we do pretty well.
That's pretty good. Yeah.
We've been approached from, uh, a few different companies in the recent past. But the products they're offering require us to do a little more complex work. Um, ladder and CDs and, and it ties up our money in ways that we, as I said earlier in the presentation, we need to have those funds available for projects, to fund projects when we have those projects going. And so where we do a blade and the bank allows us the flexibility to move those funds within a day's notice back into the tracking account. So
Wow, yeah.
The rate is pretty good.
Super useful.
Anything else, Bryce?
Yeah, I do have a couple of more. I'll, I'll try to be as quick as I can here, but I, um, made some notes and highlighted, uh, line items. In particular, I'm a little confused about the COFs fund. There's, uh, there's an entry of twenty-five thousand and something in the line items that, um, go to law enforcement, I believe. But then it's paid for by the grant. So I don't really understand what does the twenty-five thousand represent then?
That's, that's the cost, that's the admin cost that we charge the COFs fund. So that's city manager, I believe. That's the city managers. Uh, I'm looking at that now. That's the city managers, um, costs on top of that. It's also, uh, part of the lease for, uh, their offices, uh, Trent, uh, they, they use my office. We share that office with the
Okay, I get it. Yeah, okay.
There's, there's those, those kind of overhead costs are included in that number.
Yeah, okay. Good, understood. There was another, um, item under, I believe, um, lease revenue or, um, similar regarding, uh, I think Verizon. Uh, two, uh, there was a, a dollar amount, but then the next, the note says that the, um, the facility was, uh, discontinued in twenty twenty-two.
Right, that was the one that was on Trinidad head. And now, now there's no more cell towers up there. They removed that. They found a different look.
But, so then what does the number represent?
That's just a placeholder. It's no longer, no longer part of our budget.
So we're not actually getting that money?
No.
Anymore, okay.
I think that ended in twenty twenty.
Yeah, that would make.
See, it's twenty twenty. Certainly had some money spent in twenty twenty-five, but I think that aside, then.
Yeah, that would make more sense. I just have a couple more here. Oh, on the, uh, wage, the wages and salaries breakdown. Uh, does that include the attorney and the planner?
No.
In that, that number?
No, no, that's a different line item. Wages are for in-house staff. So attorney and planner, that's, uh, that's a different line on, that's a different line on revenue, uh, side of the ledger. And on the expense side.
I think that covers it for me. Um, you know, and I generally feel good about the budget, although I'm a little, I mean, I, I could be wrong, but I always assumed that the definition of a balanced budget was where your ex, uh, expenditures do not exceed your revenue. And here I see we're, we're going to be dipping into the reserve funds in order to, you know, make this work. So is it the, and I think, you know, it might, I, I don't know. It seems to, it seems like it might be something to aspire to that we could get to the point where our, you know, our, our revenue is greater or equal to than our expenses. So we don't have to dip into the reserve funds.
Yeah, I'm supervisor mayor, but that, that, this, this is a balanced budget. We're proposing a balanced budget. This, this revenues are nine sixty-seven, expenditures are nine sixty.
Right, I understand.
Seven, seven thousand, seven thousand dollars to the gun.
Yeah, but we're getting there by dipping into our reserve funds.
No, no, we're not. That's not on this proposal.
Well, then I'm seriously misreading something here because, for example, the windows for the town hall.
You're, you're correct. The windows are, are a reserve item. That's, that's correct. A thousand could be just like.
And I'm pretty sure that, um, even the, um, like the, in order to the salaries and wages, it's, it's mentioned that you know, we we have the ability or we, we have the, yeah, it's, it, it's not in the, um, summary there, but in, uh, in the attachment to the to the agenda. Let me see if I, I can find it here real quick and let's see.
But you're, you're correct. The reserve funds for town hall improvements are, are not in this budget.
Right.
Because we don't know those numbers yet, but they will come out of the reserve.
Yeah, so I look at it that, you know, you want your kind of operating budget to be balanced, your expenses and, and revenue, you know, balanced as, as much as possible. And things change throughout the year. That's one of the things we've noticed is the amount of tax collected, it's not a hard and fast rule, but we've been pretty fortunate in the forecasting has been good. But then you have these kind of extra expenses that are not, you know, accounted for. And that's I, I think about is why we have a reserve. So if we want to, for example, fix up the town hall, it's going to cost a hundred K. That's a big chunk of our budget unless we pull from the reserve. So so while I, I agree with you, Bryce, that you want to try and have as much of your run rate expenses and revenue match, there are times that you do want to dip into your reserves for special projects. And that's, I think, up to the council. Because we could say, oh, we don't want to tap the reserves. We don't want to, you know, do this extra work. Or we, there's a trade-off maybe that we want to say, let's not spend money here so that we can, whoops, fix up the town hall. Um,
Right.
Needs to kind of weigh in on, on that. I think that's a good point.
Yeah, and I, you know, again, I, I'm saying I'm not disputing that this is a good idea to, to go forward with the budget, but um, I think we should recognize that it does, it does depend, you know, to some extent. And I found the page. Uh, it's at the very beginning, fund description and forecasts. Where under the heading of reserves, it says, adjust salaries as needed to account for the results of the compensation study. So in other words, if we
That is in the packet.
If we're going to be.
Yeah, I mean, I've got water, cemetery, et cetera. All the general fund, police, fire.
Real quick, anybody know?
Yeah, please.
Hey Bryce, I don't want to say, I don't, I don't want to be scratching from looking for that page real quick, but I, I, I found a slide from uh, last year's budget that we put up and, and I, I get, I, I understand where you're coming from and I'm and, but I, I think we had some misses in the last five years. And this slide that I'm bringing up right now, I don't know how, if, if you can see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see it.
Yeah, so this is a general fund reserve snapshot. I think, um, Joe had a water fund reserve picture in there showing from nineteen, twenty nineteen forward. But this uh, slide I had in the last year's bu, uh, budget, maybe that was the one missing, Joe. I'm not sure. Your budget. But, but this shows the reserves and, and it shows how they grew every year from twenty nineteen moving forward. So the general fund just kept growing. And part of that, I think what I tried to articulate last year during the budget was that, you know, due, due to COVID in a lot of ways, we weren't achieving our spending goals in the general fund. So some of these projects with the town hall have been on, on hold for like four or five years. And as a result, even though we were budgeting for them, we weren't hitting those spending targets. So money just kept growing in the bank every year, so to speak. So a lot of the things that we're doing now were actually programmed to do years prior. So if you look at the, um, the, the, even the, the next layer up, if you go up in the sky a little higher and look at the bird's eye view, you'll see that over these years, twenty nineteen through twenty, we've been building those reserves. And those reserves were supposed to be used for these capital improvement projects. So even though our va, our operating budget, like Cheryl said, you know, our daily operating budget is, is covered. Um, these are the revenues that you see up on this slide right now that we're, we put away for capital improvements. So, um, I don't know if that helps clarify.
Yeah, I, I do. Yeah, that, that makes perfect sense now.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so, and I'll just close with a general comment that, you know, we're very fortunate in Trinidad to be in such good shape. Because a lot of other cities and the county don't have, don't have the, uh, you know, the, the, uh, same situation we have. So we're very lucky and, uh, I, I appreciate everyone's good work on the budget this year.
All right, um, I think with that, I will open to public comments and questions regarding the budget. Ms. Fleischer?
Any question? Just a couple of questions on water. Um, four thousand a month is mandated for the chief operating officer to sort of oversee the plan. Is that still common?
No. Oh, can I answer the question?
Yes, please.
Yeah, no, that's not, not common. We, co, Coleman's last month was mid-March.
Oh, good. So that, that is Anderson then?
No.
Oh, so who is it?
It's a consultant named Eric Sanders.
And is he local or?
No, he's from Cloverdale.
So he's.
Local word and the last person, frightened of an owner.
Okay, so.
And he's four thousand six cops. So he answers phone calls and emails and alarms, all that stuff and comes up there once a month for the, until I've included in the for filing. So
But Coleman's dog.
And, and, and files our regular tour, our Coleman's dog, yes.
And so the T three Anderson, is he on the public work staff?
He is, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, he's scheduled to take his test in June.
Um, and then I didn't understand, there was a, a, a three hundred thousand dollar gift. Is, and from whom did the gift, from which fund did the gift come? And where does the gift go?
Went from those reserves that we were just discussing with.
Okay, so the gift is our reserve.
Gift is from general, general fund money into the water, fun, water enterprise.
Oh, thank you. I thought some beneficent.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Maybe those people were.
Thank you, Patty. Other public comments or questions regarding the budget? Andrew, you have this hand raised. Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, hey, um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, I, I, Bryce, it, it may have come up when Bryce was talking about, but my, my question was actually around the compensation study and how that's in the budget right now. And I, I, you guys may have covered it and I'm sorry if I just didn't quite follow the conversation, but um, I, I, I would think that, I don't know. I, I, I suppose I would look at that like you might want to think about how um, maybe you want to make a guess as to what that might be in factored into your budget. So you start thinking about, thinking about that for the go-forward. Um, because I would imagine that's going one direction and um, not that it's not right, that it goes that direction or anything like that, just how, how to kind of uh, Mary, to your point about kind of matching your revenues and your expenses and how you might be able to get there sooner rather than later with any increase like that. That was my only comment.
Yeah, that's a good point. So we factored in the COLA and the, uh, increase, uh, potentially for city clerk and system, city manager. But we don't know yet what the other adjustments will be, do we? So
We do not. I'm not sure if they're going to be, Andrew's probably more right than not that they're going to go in one direction, but
Yeah.
We, we could, we could have some folks that are a little bit higher than their classification suggests. And then those folks would be they call Y rated, so they would stay in place until that rate caught up to them. And some folks are going to get a pay raise. I'm thinking that this, hoping this three percent gets them closer to where they're, and, uh, I don't, I couldn't hazard a guess.
Okay, so it might be something that we look at and.
It's, it's going to be based on, yeah, and it's going to be based on, well, I think we will, once we have that compensation study in hand, we will come back to council with a number and ask for, for an increase or to, to adjust rates based on that compensation study. But I think it's important for folks that are asking questions, Andrew and others who have questions. The compensation study has been based on, uh, cities and towns that are similar size and much to ours that also have a water treatment plant and distribution system. So, um, places like Clear Lake and, and Blue Lake, there are going to be smaller agencies that have, you know, under a million dollars in budgets. So I wouldn't expect it's going to be huge increases and, and we're not a calpers agency. So that is another wrinkle. It's, is less of a extreme increase, I would guess. Um, all of those things make it difficult for me to put a number on what that might be.
Thank you. And thanks, Andrew. Other comments from the other? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council. Um, we are not approving the budget tonight. We're accepting this into the records. And thank you to staff and all the hard work of community. It's sure that, um, a lot of thought, they're going into it's a lot of work. So thank you for that.
Well, um, maybe we, we, we haven't talked yet about, uh, Joe mentioned at the beginning that we have to decide whether, um, we want to approve. Three, three eight hour days for the security.
Thank you, Bryce. I had that on my little notes here and skipped right over it. So so what do you, what do you think? Do you have a, any thoughts on the, from the council on that, Bryce? You can start if you have some thoughts.
Well, is, if I'm, if I understood it correctly, it wouldn't change much. The number of hours being worked be from twenty to twenty four, I believe, per week. Just more on on certain days. Um, I think all in all, people are very happy to have that level of protection. And I would hazard a guess that we have probably some of the highest level of security protection in the state of California. You know, between the sheriffs and our private security and the rancheria officers that I see driving around up and down. Yeah, so I'd like to, and there's, and there's the important fact that it is being uh, fortunately for us, covered by the funding, the grant funding, the cops funding. So uh, if they, you know, they're making a request from us, I think we should, we should try to accommodate that. And if it becomes a problem, uh, we could, we could out, you know, we could try to adjust it in the future back to the old four day a week thing. But I would be inclined to uh, approve it myself. And I'm willing to make that motion if if now's the time. But uh, we may want to hear public comment on it, I guess, first.
Their council comments first.
Yeah, I would like to know what days of the week because I don't want to see a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
He's proposing the weekend, Friday, Saturday.
Okay, I would, I'd be, I'd be, I would approve that.
Good point.
I don't know.
Any public comment regarding Pacific Sec, Coast Security?
Is this?
Yeah. And whether we can go to three.
Is there advantage to having the security here more days a week or a limited, limited time than having here for an entire, you know, day, but having here less days of the week?
I don't know.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't know if any of us can really answer that question. It's um, yeah, I mean, it cuts both ways, I think. It just depends. You never know when the bad guys are going to be around and show up or whatever, so.
I mean, I'd love to have, you know, something like seven days a week. So the more days the better. I I was kind of wondering about that, too. Like, I liked having four, five hours, forty a week just because there may not be enough to do for eight hours a day. But but to Bryce's point, it depends on, you know, when things happen. And on the weekend, it is kind of interesting because, as you would guess, most often, things happen in the wee hours. You know, it's overnight and and it's in certain hotspots and turn it out. So I guess I'm, I'm a fan of keeping them because it does help, it augments our police force. So I guess I would agree with Bryce and move ahead and act.
Yeah, they say something about they, they didn't, we wanted to make it work for eight hour shifts for their staff.
So it's not, we can just ask them to come whenever we want or when. Exactly.
I'm a huge fan of having more security here and um, you know, there was years where we were having a lot of burglaries in homes in Trinidad and so. And all things can be good, safe communities.
I I would also like to have like a community, like a telephone number that the community could, you know, call on the weekend. If there was a hotspot going on and we just needed to call, other than nine one one.
Nine one one's the call.
Exactly, okay.
That's who you want to call.
I always feel, you know, bother, bothersome.
You're not bothered. You, you, they need that record so that if they follow up and then they have, you know, a record of that person or persons causing mayhem or trouble and a responsible party will follow up. So please call nine one one.
If somebody is going out of town, though, there is an option to reach out to them directly and and the staff can can reach out to Pacific Security for you. So like if you're leaving for days, you know, for vacation for a week or something and you want Civic Security to keep an eye, to keep an eye on your house, for example, you can let us know they've offered to, you know, do dry fries and so forth. So, you know, you kind of have to think about it as taking advantage of this service that we have available. It's a little bit different than than what the police might offer. And so they're happy to do that. And they also will come to your house if you want them to kind of consult on lighting and, you know, being careful, of course, about not annoying your neighbors with too much light. But, you know, they'll, they'll consult with you on uh, security systems and things like that, so for free, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think um, their function is almost more like the public perception of, you know, just somebody around in the daytime. Because the wee hours situation is largely moving to uh, you know, the affordability now of security cameras and lighting systems, motion detectors. It's really not very expensive to have a pretty advanced security for your, for your home, you know. You can catch the bears walking through the neighborhood late at night.
Yeah, that's for sure.
And identify them.
I don't know if you need, we don't need a vote on that or.
Well, I I think, I think we should go ahead and have a vote. It makes a better record in the minutes that it was a discussion action. We took action to direct staff to bring back the, the draft budget in June with if 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 it passes the uh, adjustment to three, eight hour days for the security.
Yeah. Do you want to make a, a motion, Bryce?
Yeah, that would be my motion.
Okay. All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, and thank you, Bryce, for reminding me about the civic security. Don't know where that went. Okay, so next up is our discussion decision regarding just the distribution of true stock occupancy tax funds to community organizations. I don't know why that's hard to read, but the TOT tax. Um, so I'm going to turn that uh, over to staff.
Thank you. Uh, in twenty thirteen, council agreed to allocate ten percent of the total annual TOT for community organization, oh, community organizations. Uh, every council since then has confirmed that intent. And so tonight we are asking you to reaffirm that for the Chamber of Commerce, the Museum, the Library and the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust. The total unaudited uh, occupancy tax collected in twenty three, twenty four is twenty two, uh, four hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred twenty four. So we will be issuing ten percent of that, twenty one thousand, three hundred ninety two to each organization in the following payments. So uh, six thousand, four hundred seventeen thousand to Trinidad, Greater Trinidad Chamber, Trinidad Museum and the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust. And ten percent would go to the Trinidad Library. That's two thousand, one hundred and thirty nine dollars and twenty cents. What we would like tonight is your approval uh, to require to confirm the budget expense for the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five.
Are there questions from the council? Is my only question? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Bryce.
I was just going to say I'm in favor of of making the distribution. All the organizations are very much worthy and we can't, should support them if we can. So.
I agree. I, the only question I had um, is whether or not the council or the city gets any reporting, any reports back. In other words, um, do we know how the funding is spent, how it's utilized? And it would be kind of fun to hear about the projects, like how it's used by, you know, for example, if the museum puts, is able to put in a whole new display or something. I'm just wondering if we ever.
We can ask them to come back and report to council if you'd like. I don't know that we have any thing like that.
I mean, I wouldn't want to do anything onerous. It's more just, you know.
I, I can do an informal, I can survey them and come back with a staff report.
Yeah, well, if Patty Fleischer is still.
Yes, I can.
Present.
Yeah, you can't see them nice, but Patty's, Patty's um, moving around. She wants to come talk to us.
Well, we're exceedingly grateful. It's, the money is wonderful, I have to say. It really is. But I think um, is as important as that, it's just the moral support and the, the interest of the community. It just makes us feel whole to, you know, be part. I used to give a whole detailed thing to Gabe and I can do that again, but tonight, one of the things this year has been um, our insurance having gone from three thousand a year to six thousand dollars a year. That's, that's not an exhibit, but this is not fun revenues and the city experience is the same thing. The other thing is we had about a thirty three hundred dollar upgrade of our security system with motion detectors and things. And we're facing a twenty six to thirty thousand dollar roof. I, maybe this year, maybe next year, depends on when the roofer comes. But um, in addition to that, we've got some terrific exhibits going on. But it's, well, I'll give a more detailed report of how your hardware money is spent or how the taxpayers' money is spent. But I just mainly wanted to impart how grateful we are. It's just a wonderful boost to the group. I think the library and the land trust feel the same way.
Yeah, thank you. We, I was just at the museum, uh, a week or two ago and I just, I have to say yet again that it's a wonderful place to visit and you've just done, the staff there and you, Patty, have done a wonderful job. So I know this money is well spent and well used. I was just, you know, it's kind of fun to hear about how, although not if it's just an insurance issue, probably. That's not as exciting.
No.
Please, yes, do you mind coming to the podium?
I'm just going to hear you on.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Karen Parker and curious, thirty percent to the land trust and ten percent to the library. Us, I need it to be built for the future, we want to expand trust. The library is used more online. Question to see if that's still viable to have those percentages the way they are.
I can probably speak to that if you want. I'm doing the civic care restart in two thousand thirteen. So initially this was started because, one, we had raised, it costs four hundred twenty five thousand dollars to build the, the um, library, all community funds. We raised four hundred fifty thousand dollars and we didn't use it all. So there was a twenty five thousand dollar reserve, uh, which is held at the Ambulatory Foundation. So the library has a reserve fund. In addition to that, of course, the city already pays the rent to the land trust, which is the underlying property owner. So the, the library receives benefits that none of the other groups does, does in terms of city support. And of course, the public works people clean and maintain the building already. So that was the reason for the difference in the initial, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's a good, thank you. That was.
And then I I think from the city's perspective, we were happy to not have to wade into the perhaps difficult task of deciding who should get what percentage and the, the, all four worked it out themselves. And so that was, made it easier for us. And I know it hasn't, it hasn't been mentioned specifically, but the Chamber of Commerce, of course, promotes local business, which in turn generates taxes, which support the city. So it's all a symbiotic relationship.
That's good background. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any school wishes for local uh, kids, kids who go to Trinidad school?
Right, uh, other public comments about this item? All right, seeing that, and I'll bring it back to the council. Um, I would move to approve the dis- distribution of the allocation of TOT revenue to community organizations.
A second.
And there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work. Uh, okay, with that, we are moving on to um, the discussion decision regarding approval of the plans and bid documents for the Water System Intertight Project. And I will turn it over to Angela for that.
Council, um, so before you are the long awaited plans and the, the package for the Intertight Project. We're hoping to put our first ad in the paper. Uh, it's about to bid on the eighteenth, so it will come this Sunday. Um, and this is before you for approval and review. Um, it's going for the West Haven's board tomorrow, the special meeting. Um, and it's just a key date. We're hoping to go up to construction um, at the time of July and we'll be wrapping it up in November. Um, and there is a note noting if Sarah provided any updated insurance requirements that they placed the current ones. There have been no updates. Um, so.
Sarah has sent us an approval, they approved.
It was today. Um, and in terms of comments, um, we heard back from the attorney, Sarah, attorney's company. As of this meeting, I haven't offered back from the Department of Water Resources yet, so I don't know if they've had comments um, on the package or project plans. Just getting any comments.
At this stage, we don't have a contractor.
Yeah, right. So that's what we're going up to bid for.
And it would go to bid to for like three, is a standard, three different contractors or?
Oh, this is a one month bid. This is a formal bid.
Just a formal.
Yeah, so this will be a one month bidding period. Uh, and then we go out to, I think, three uh, uh, contractors, force, um, that's two.
Yes, yes, I believe it's two. Um.
And public notices as well, some public advertising. So it's, it's the full blown bid package. It's what, this is why the plan is special before you all.
And then also, um, going at those bids will be brought back to the council and. Any questions?
Questions for Angela from the council?
Um.
Go ahead, Bryce.
Well, I looked them over carefully as I could, but most of it's over my head. This is one of those times when we have to rely on our staff to, you know, tell us there's the right number of washers on this uh, bolt. You know, that hooks onto this thing. But I used to love technical drawing all through junior high and high school. So it was kind of fun to look at how it's advanced, too, with the computer generated illustrations. It's really amazing, the the detail they can show. So I'm for it. I'm glad it's moving forward. I think it's a good project and um, I'm all for it.
Yeah, thank you for getting it this far and uh, I mean, I was reading, it's like thirty one hundred feet of six inch pipeline and free fire hydrants, a new Intertight pump station and electrical integration will turn it out to water treatment plant. And so this is a pretty big project. And when we get closer, I I was, I didn't want to bring it up now, but when we get closer, we can talk about kind of public communication about, you know, the disruption that's caused by construction and so on and so forth. Because that's always a big concern from the public, but um, and I don't know how much of that will be a long road.
Yeah, so just for an update there, uh, we, the program for that permit is going to allow West Haven Drive to be shut down between water treatment plant and West Haven.
Right, okay.
So it'll be through the, open to a little, I've been already building questions on that.
Yeah.
Both with our own water line project and this project, it will be open to those folks that live in the closed area, but closed to folks that are just trying to go through.
So closed with through traffic.
Closed with through traffic and open to the local traffic.
And we probably won't do this in twenty twenty five, though, right?
No, we're doing it this August, when it's going out to bid. Uh, this is, this will be the beginning of the thirty day bid period, so.
Right, right. Fifteen days from July eleventh or something. Okay, sorry.
Notice the receipt is sometime in August.
Yeah.
Notice the receipt is July eleventh.
July eleventh.
Yeah, so we're hoping to start construction end of July. Um, and also I can continue to do what I did with the pipeline project, and that was um, weekly construction updates on our city calendar. So um, we'll, we'll make sure there's notice.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Uh, other, let's see, questions from the public regarding the Intertight Project? All right, uh, seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the council. Uh, any final thoughts before we, uh, on this one, I believe we do need a vote to uh, approve the, the plan and bid documents, as they stand.
I'll make the motion, uh, Madam Mayor, to approve the plans and bid package and have the staff advertise the project and request formal bids.
I'll second that.
Right, and then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Angela.
Thank you. I'm very proud of seeing you.
This is behind the scenes, so much work on this, so thank you very much. Um, all right, now, uh, next item is staff activity report for April, so I'll turn that over to our chief manager. Yeah, okay.
All right, here we go, uh, gonna be short and sweet tonight, so we had a CSA four meeting, that's the fire district meeting. Uh, we met with members of West Haven Fire, Cal Fire, the Rancheria Port of Supervision members, Madron Wilson. Were there, along with FLATCO staff, uh, we discussed the study for the fire services and agreed that it's a worthwhile endeavor. Uh, we're trying to, to, to uh create a document, uh. That's gonna help the consultant give us votes, uh, to, to help us. Decide what kind of fire services uh we could afford and what kind of fire services uh could be offered. From both Cal Fire and or a, a combination of volunteer and paid firefighters, um. So we are looking for, we did have a quote back from a consultant, so we use that quote as a, a, a base document. And we're working on that base document to create a better uh request for proposals, uh. And we will send that out in the near future, and and we will be back with an update when we have one, so. So we determine on that, water update, for those of you who are paying attention to the water. Questions, Patty Fleischer asked a good question, so the, if, the invoice for our chief, chief land operator was four thousand dollars for April. That'll be the same that we get for May, and that's, uh, it would be that going forward until we no longer need his services. Uh, Carl Anderson is working to schedule his exam for T three, I believe he's got it on the schedule for early June. Uh, the West Haven Intertight Project has been uh approved tonight, that's a huge milestone for us. Uh, this project has been literally years in uh planning and staff working to get this project out to bid. Supposed to start at the end of July and around November, as uh. That number, I thought it reported earlier, uh, we are waiting on contractor response for quotes for the window at Rock River Town Hall. Uh, there have been a handful, I think, of contractors, gave a shaking his head, yes, who have come out, so we expect prices to start coming back. We're also getting prices on paintwork, um, so the fact that we're getting some local folks to bid on that work. As well, as well as folks from the greater Trinidad area and Humble County, um, is good for us, I think we'll get, hopefully get a good price, so. But that, and we'll be open for questions or comments.
Right, questions for Joe from the council? I'm excited about the town hall going ahead, I really appreciate that, it's been, you know, as you guys have said, it's been a while since we. You know, with COVID and so forth, and we couldn't do it, it was down the line, I know the, the civic club has chatted with us about upgrading the kitchen. So that's something to put on the, you know, down the line, not this coming year, and then, um, we talked about refinishing the floors, but the floors are so thin. That we don't think we can refinish them anymore, so, you know, that's something also for the future.
Be back in FY twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Exactly, I think at this point, we're, yeah, we're talking about the following fiscal year or even one after that, but at least we get the exterior all done. I think that's gonna be fantastic, so, so thank you.
Oh, just one other update, we will have uh some work going on with these uh. Our breaker box, service box tomorrow, so we will be out of power for a few hours, uh. At, here at Town Hall, at the clerk's office and civic club. So it's part of our.
Are you gonna?
Upgrade, and now uh Zinco, for those of you that are out there with a Zinco service box. Uh, you know that they're a fire danger, so we're changing that out, um, and getting that upgraded, so that we're.
So Brian and me will be here in the, in the big room.
Are, uh, are we gonna be able to use the generator? Or no?
No, this room, this room will have power, Bryce.
Oh, okay.
Just the civic club room and clerk's office will be without power.
It's civic club room in the kitchen.
In the kitchen. Oh, first office, okay, all right, so.
So nobody will go hungry.
Nobody will go hungry.
Good.
Thank you.
Good to hear, thank you, uh, questions from the public regarding the uh staff report? Okay, then I will bring it back to the council for the final agenda item, which is uh future agenda items. So things that we would like to add to the list for the future, is there anything that you would like to tee up?
Well, let's just note that we're having another meeting in one week. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, and what, what, on that, we have the ALNT possible opening, anything else?
Opening trails, Fleischer, so we'll have a little bit of, of, of an update on the Kalindo, the Benwick, and the ALNT.
Okay, so, so it's a general, a generalized item. I can't think of anything else off the top of my head.
Um, the only thing I wanted to add is down the road is a single-use plastic ordinance. Um, discussion, um, we had an opportunity to become Blue City certified. And it's a special certification for coastal cities that are environmentally responsible, and we fit so many of the criteria. Um, but the one that we didn't quite have is any kind of single-use plastic controls, and so we would want to do it in a way that was. Um, well, we'll talk about it on the agenda, that we wouldn't want to do it in a way that was uh worked for the businesses in town and so forth.
We'll come back with an item in the future.
Yeah, and I have a draft ordinance that you could use. Yeah.
Sounds appropriate.
Great, um, I think that's it then, the meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone.
Thank you.